Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
It's two minutes after six, February 3rd. Before we start, we, Bill, make like as a bring of only one update. You want to say somebody get it? Kim will do what, or do you want to put it off to the next meeting? Kim will go get it. Kim says she'll get it. Okay. Is that, is that gonna happen, or?
Yeah, I will go get it.
Okay, so. Any vote to adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
Can I add something to the agenda? I'm just going to ask the commission to use some of the survey study line item for making copies of maps that were done by our league in the past. So can we get on the agenda?
So what do you want to put out here?
Money is to copy maps for the water, fish water study committee.
So can we put that as between eight and nine, between nine and 10?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll be back for them maybe.
Okay, so the, I guess we need a vote to approve the maps as amended.
I'll make a motion, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay. We don't have the minutes of the 20th, so we'll do them next time, unfortunately.
We don't?
No, Bill forgot them. He brought the six instead of the, I'm betting on the 11th, but I'll put it on here, so.
They're posted online.
But aren't they the 20th, all of their dated to six?
Yeah.
Because on this, it says you've approved the minutes of January 6th on this, on this meeting.
Oh, okay.
And online instead.
So Bill, can you distribute the minutes back again? You have the check for this?
I have three corrections.
Should we wait until we get this? I know you haven't, though, because you gave it to me. Sorry, it's all on tape, though. I'm gonna turn it off for a second.
The first correction is the date at the top.
First correction is the date on top. So it's really a Monday, January 20th, correct?
Yeah.
Do you have any other? You need a, I guess.
I've got two other corrections. On paragraph five, second sentence down, it said Richard J. Tomson Tow Health Officer. I'm assuming it should be, or tow health officer. And under paragraph nine, it says green harder, that should be clean harder, lasting. I guess that's what I got.
Do we have any other additions or corrections? Alan? I had this name wrong about three times, I changed it.
On number 10, the last four, we've capitalized Welch.
Okay. Do we have any other? If not, I need a motion to accept the minutes as amended. Second. Alan, second is it? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Warrants were signed by everybody. That was done. So I guess we'll move right into the higher report, Danny. You want to discuss the COVID first, I guess?
Our COV on East of Grove is one that we get the state money for, 110. But we have, we won't know on the other grant for that till like April or May. I think Bill is just worried about putting that up to bid now, so we can get it done this coming season. Either way, we have to use that 110 this coming season, so. It's not to come out of capital budget if we don't get the Better Back Roads grant matched with it, or.
What's the total cost for that?
$175.
That's estimate.
Yeah.
There's no downside to bid it up now, is it?
No, I would bid it now, so you could get on the works yet.
I'd like Hardy to address that.
I got it in the capital budget, got 110 coming, and we put enough money in to cover almost all of the $175. So I would say you bid it, because that was the plan.
Yeah, I mean, there's no downside. I don't see it.
I'll make that motion.
Wait a minute, I just didn't understand. So even without anything from D-Trans, we have money in capital budget, is that what you're saying?
Yes, we plan for this.
Okay, so stay on making a motion. Do we have a second? Second. Any other discussion, further discussion on the COVID issue? So all in favor of having Danny bid out the COVID on complete book number eight? Say aye. Opposed? Let's go to the excessive weight permit. You have the three, and I put it in. Yeah, we put together, and then there's a single one, right?
Does that include the new ones for the logging?
Yes, it does. That's town. And then I want, besides approval, I want you to authorize me to sign them. So it is, it's Velco, Newport Sand and Gravel, which is also care of concrete. And then for the logging, it is. Townhouse Trucking, it was everything, any townhouses, Jody Town and Townhouse. And I don't have his, I have the money for all of them. I don't have his insurance certificate for him, like it is, it will be sent.
No.
And he won't be on across the bridge from the logging man. Is everybody satisfied with that? Do we need a motion to have you assign them, Bill? Or? Yes, I need a motion for you to approve them, and then to allow me to sign them. And make that motion. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the weight permits and having you bill sign, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I guess we'll go right into the V-Trans Town Map discussion.
We got the cat.
Yeah, but. Oh, yeah, the cat, where the hell was that?
First one.
First one.
First one under highway.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I don't have it on my agenda, that's why, because this has must have been an updated again. That isn't my fault. I know, I know, I printed up four of them, so I guess it's, all right, so let's do that. So let's do the cat one. As I understand, talking to Bill, the lease, you can't change it, you can't amend it, you can't do anything. And so we need a motion to suspend reading the whole thing. So the only thing that we need to do is have a motion on who's gonna sign it, whether it be Bill or myself. I want to be really clear on that motion. I want you to move that page that has the where of, the where for, to the end. Whereas, 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 the laws of the state of Vermont, all that little print and resolve, and that you're naming me as town administrator to sign the documents. And then Kim will, will state that those were, that this motion, as it is written right here, was adopted by you at this meeting. So I want, I want to be clear, that's what I need from you, because that's what CAP wants from us. They need to ensure that you, that you've agreed to this purchase. You've already agreed to the purchase in September 2nd meeting, but it didn't have all these details. And so this is what they want. And I just want to tell you a little bit about the contract, so that you can have a little bit understanding about it. It is $23,697 per year. For, so the first payment is this year, and then four more payments at the end. I'm sorry, you know, I payments and then it's a payment of $1. When you pay the $1, it's ours. That, those payments add up to, not 107, but they add up to like 115, because there is 3.87% interest on that the whole time it's going through. If at any time you are stating in the contract that you can't intend to stay in business for more than the length of this contract, and actually to use it and pay for it. But that is something where to happen, and you go out of business, then you can turn, you can terminate this lease, provided you give them six, 60 days, written notice, and return it to them. They will then, the rest of the lease is forgiven. But you have to do it on the anniversary date, not, the 60 days has to be 60 days before the anniversary date. The anniversary date will be today. Okay, and it's paid every year on this date without them billing you. I'm sure they're gonna remind us, but they say they're not, okay? And so that's it. You're gonna give it insured, and you then, if somebody uses that tractor to run over somebody, the cattle owner's not responsible. Okay, more insurance for it. We can't transfer it to anybody else. I think that's about the highlights of the small print on those other four pages ahead of this page.
So is it currently under our insurance? Has it been insured?
Yes.
It is here, so it is.
It is, eighth of January. I have that certificate from Kim over there.
Do you have the increase of that insurance on this?
Pardon me?
Will we have an increase on the insurance?
I have no idea how the insurance works. Lots of times with the insurance, they probably don't. I don't know, Kim will know. Insured through CAP or insured through the LCP? Do you think it's passive?
Yeah, the LCP.
It's passive, on the insurance policy, and that's why I'm wondering, it may, or may, they may not hide it, I said. You need to have an identification, but I don't know if they charge you by.
Probably have an umbrella.
I'll make a motion that we authorize Bill to sign the document and follow the stipulations you write to us. You've got to adopt all the words on that page as your motion. So adopt the whereas, correct? Whereas all the way through the law. So just a minute, so you did not, starting at whereas through the, through the bottom of language. No. All right. You don't need rebuilding it.
Right.
Attachment B, starting at whereas. And then Bill Kearns has authority to sign for it?
Correct.
No, in the middle there, where it says who is going to sign for it, it will be William G. Kearns, Town Administrator. Right. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll say.
Do we have any other discussion on the lease other than what was cut, Paul? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So I see Kim signed it already, Bill, with copyright, is that, so she'll have to resign it again, is that right?
That's Kim.
Yeah, I will.
Kim, there's a, was a question on the insurance. Because we insureing a second piece, another piece of equipment, is there an additional cost, or is it going to look like it?
Oh, we'll probably get an additional cost back to us, or an addition. But it's already on the policy. I put it on the policy already.
This is the listing on the policy. And it's January 8th through 1/1/2021.
And CAP will get a copy of that in this contract, I'm assuming.
It's required to be sent with it. All right, so let's, let's finish up the truck bid, and then we can get on to the road. So who has that? Chris, you want to open it up? Now, I sent, I sent bids to four companies, and this is the only one we got back from our charlevoy. Is that the name, our charlevoy out of Northern Vermont? They sent a refusal bid. They thanked us, but they didn't want to, they're too far away. And the other two people, the other two companies did not answer. So everybody knows, this is the replacement of a little freight liner truck that they used behind the hat, because we can't get over the Kansas River. It's, it's cost us, what, Danny, we're at about $7,000 so far, I think? Already, just in the shares?
This winter, right now, it's almost nine. It had a cooler line that, they had to do this last time around. That hooks to the radiator, which is plastic, and getting fitting out, they broke the radiator, so they had to put a radiator in it. The exhaust was all warranty, that was $4,000, that was warranty. And then we had some ABS problems with it that they worked on.
We had, last year, we had problems too.
Yeah.
We tried to buy a trucker only, but there's just not, nothing available.
Should we, should there be at any time start considering to do a five-year program on most trucks from a seven? And how's that due to the?
I've asked for that, we looked into it for many years.
I think that's something in the capital budget, maybe needs to take a look at next year.
Because what happens to your trade-in from the five-year to a seven-year?
Drops.
Well, I know, but is it, is it substantial?
Yeah, yeah. Because if you go with the five years, you have two to three years of some warranty left, so it brings the value up. So when we trade them, this, actually, that freight liner, the warranty is off at five years. That's the longest you could buy at that time. So if you can sell it at five years with three years of warranty, it really, whoever's buying it covers all your major components, most of them. This is a Cummins in this little truck, which five years was a MAF. The truck that is supposed to be bid is supposed to be a Detroit engine, which is supposed to be warranty seven.
So this is the seventh year of that truck?
Yeah.
What do you imagine we put in it for the two years from five to seven to keep it on the road?
Probably around $15,000 in two years. And last year was the EGR cooler, which was not warranty. I think that was like $3,500 for that. They get $130 an hour down at the workhouse, so it adds up fast.
Have we done the warranty packages in the past?
We tried to buy what the maximum they offer. And it's always take the salesman's word on what it is. It's supposed to be all in this, there are two of the options. But I actually want to take, when, I don't want you to decide on this tonight, no matter what it is, because I want to go into the service department and ask them what the warranty is. It seems to be two different things, if we find out, one from the salesman and one from the warranty office. And I want to make sure that they are offering the match you can get on that truck. As we found out that the 2018 or 19, the last 10 wheel we bought, that there was a better package you could have bought, but after six months, you can't, you can't help it. And we just found out with some of the work we done to that, that we didn't have the best warranty from that time.
Just to back up a little longer, talk about warranty, what about the CAP warranty?
On the escalator?
Yeah.
That was seven-year warranty, and I think, I think it was seven years that they serviced at two for that price. So they're, they do all the oil changes and everything for the seven years. I think it's based on two a year, and the warranty for just seven years on all of them, except for what they call wear items.
So can you explain the maintenance that's just done, because I know we signed the warrants for them. What did you say about the radiator?
The cooler lines, they're automatic hook into the bottom of it. It's a, it's a plastic radiator, most all the ones are now. When they tried to take the line out of it, they threw it to plastic, because it's a steel line that goes into the plastic radiator. So we had to put a new radiator in it.
So is that their cost or our cost?
Their cost, we're hiring them to work on it.
But they broke it.
When you take your car to someone to have it worked on, and they break along that, you pay to have it fixed. It's no different.
I don't think that's fair.
It might not be, but it's the way it is.
They have the product, so they can take the cost.
All right, Chris, you want to meet the bid?
Bid from ATG Patriot to the town of Grafton. Thank you for allowing ATG Patriot the opportunity to provide you the proposal on a 2021 freight liner M2106 cab and chassis. Price is as follows. For the 2021 freight liner, single action proposed price, $99,000, $99,119. For the Viking city body equipment package, an additional $71,900 for a total sales price of $171,019. There will be an allowance for a trade-in for the 2013 freight liner of $25,000, which will bring the net down to a total for the chassis and the body equipment package of $146,019. There is the option for a warranty package, engine, truck coverage, axles, towing, totaling. The total warranty package would be $8,155 for the full warranty, extended warranty package. So that would be $8,155 in addition to the net sales price of $146,000.
Do you have a delivery time?
I don't see that specified. Quote is valid until August 25th of this year.
Dan, do you know what the, did they ever tell you that you know what the delivery time is?
No. Boy, that, it's gonna really depend on the body company, that be, if you approve it today, it could be a year out before you see the truck.
In the past, when we've gotten a bid, we've asked Danny to review it. And he'll make a recommendation to us at the next meeting. Oh, yeah, it used to be reviewed by Danny. Any other questions on the contract, the bids? All right, so now I guess we'll hit the road here. Bill, do you want to start on the road situation, or, what's gonna happen, or? Let me put. Before we go, Danny, do you have any other, any other things you want to talk about?
Other than we're just gonna be, we got some co-patch in, in the last week, so we can pack some of the blacktop up. We've been cutting brush, started up on fire pong, and finish up that road. Unless I can manage the weather for the end of the week. Do it.
Okay, Bill, go ahead. Does everybody have more information to pass it on? The case, the discussion started when I heard vast people talking about they, someone was putting a gate somewhere in this area on this road, and they wanted to know how could they have put it in there if it's public roads? And it's entering with the basket, you know, I'm not being really exact on this, you guys can correct me later. If I get it, I'm straight, but I'm just gonna go with the general what's happened. So I went back to the map. This, this is taken from their old ancient road maps. Now, none of these are ancient roads. To be an ancient road, and everybody gets this confused, to be an ancient road, it has to not ever have been a road. But laid out by the select board, you see, yes, we won it there, and then it was never put in. So you never, you don't see any rocks, you don't see any cradle, you don't see nothing, it's just, it's just woods. And obviously, never anywhere up there, okay? That's an ancient road. Ancient roads went away four or five years ago. If you didn't find them four or five years ago, you were done, okay? These roads have always been there, I am told, and I asked, we need to come tonight, because he knows the roads, and probably a lot of them, you probably know them, and a lot of other people in this group probably know this road too. These road, I'm told, actually exist. From just short of, of the driveway into Jackie's house, this road goes up, and then comes across, and ends approximately here. This road goes from Hall Ranch Road, and from about where Hall lived, to the intersection. This is according to the, to the description. And this one went from Hall Ranch Road down to somebody's barn. The distances on them are, in rods, are almost exactly right. This is, this is almost 2,000, this is about 1,200, and this is, well, I have it, it's easier to get given miles, it's a .73 miles, this is down here. And that is adding up each one of these segments here, and the same with these from the descriptions. You will find this description in Book of Layoffs, number 30. You'll find this, this description in Book 2A, at that page, 279, and that. And then this is Book of Layoffs, 23178. Now this one, this Book of Layoffs of 1780, this road starts at the Lockingham Town Forest, and I can show you the map, I have another map here, I can show that to you. Goes all the way through here, goes back all the way through town, comes back up Fisher Hill Road, and ends on Fisher Hill Road at the quotes, Grafton Northern Town Line. So I don't know how, but that's what, that's what the map says. So anyway, but that's not what we're interested in. All I'm interested in here is that it takes off from here.
But it's from here.
It goes from here. This is Otis Road, as it comes in from Chester Road, this is Otis Road. This is where Jackie's driveway is, and takes off before it, goes up, comes across, meets these roads that are on the ground. At this intersection, then, this road starts at Hall Ranch Road, comes down in a curve, goes to that intersection, and this road comes down from Hall Ranch to there. And they are described in, in those places I told you. In order to, now, you'll notice on this map, this is an aside, by not talking about it tonight, you know, is this road here, all these roads here? This is the rest of Otis Road. This is on our town map out to about there. Why these roads were on here, and why I can't find a description in the Book of Layoffs or in the town records, I don't know, I can't answer that. And Rooney might be able to answer that, but I can't answer it. And we may be able to put them back on the road, but I gotta have to find the descrip, if we wanted to put them back on the map, but I have to find a description, because D-Trans will not accept it, if I can't find the actual layout approved by the select board. Doesn't matter what you. Doesn't matter what you find on De Beers, doesn't matter if you find on, on all these maps, you could find a thousand years of maps. If it's, if you can't find a layout, it doesn't exist. We do know these haven't been thrown up. So what I told the people that were interested in this is what I, that I would do is set this up so that if the select board wants to put it back on the maps, I would have enough information. They'd tell me what roads they want me to tell D-Trans, put back on the maps, and I could put them back on the maps. One thing, and I don't have a dog in this bike. This road, and I have another picture I can show you. This road goes right through the middle of somebody's property. If no one cares about that road, you just might say, we don't care about that road, and we dump it back on the map. Because Mr. Logan might not be happy. I don't know. He isn't here. Everybody whose name is on this other map I'll show you have all been written a letter. Everybody got a letter about what's happening tonight. And I've heard from nobody else. Okay, except for the people in town. A lot of the vast people got it by email, but most people are wrote for our estate, which included, included the Ellsworth. The people that own this property down here, which is Paul Brook, which is Ellsworth's property. And Logan and Johnstone, I don't know. Yeah, all the people, none of the people.
It's not Logan, it's me. I'm number two.
But who owns it over here?
I don't know who owns it there, but I have.
It's David still on it.
Is that?
It's Jacob. Jacob owns it. You own Justin's section, right?
Yeah, that'd be where the number two goes. That's where my camper is. I think.
You're pointing in the middle.
Yeah.
Where the line is, is where Johnstone.
As an authority?
Let me put another map up.
We're paired with one and three here, really what we want to have on the road.
And if you're gonna do that, I say right now, if you want to do that, I would suggest that you put this act as one road.
As what?
As one road.
Oh.
Don't, don't put them back separate. Just, just for your information, that number one that's drawn on there is, that's not the trail that you're using.
Where's the?
It's part of it. But, but where that turns, it comes out right opposite of where my road to my woodshed is.
Got it.
And so, and that, that part's all four trees and stuff. I mean, it's all laid to the rocks and everything. But that's not where your snowmobile trail runs there.
Because the rest of the road, did we, you used thrown up road or is that even a town road?
Uh, yeah, it's a day forest.
They come down.
Can you put that map back up, Bill? I'm gonna try to get the other map, but, well, the one you have is worth.
Also, Al, that one, the number two road, that's not the one that goes through the hills property?
No, the number two is.
Yeah.
So, um, this, this road right here, their property corner is right there in the road. And then the laid-out stone wall is just off from theirs, right through here. It's common, common boundary. Comes out right here. But, but I don't know what classification where this turns and, and your snowmobile trail goes straight and wraps around the end of that uh, hemlock knob there. I don't know what that little piece is that ties in to where the trail goes down to the Otis Department.
So where's, where's Sue Haddad's driveway on the map?
She's off.
And this is here. Well, I know where she is, but I'm saying where it is on the, on the map.
It's right there.
Here. Oh, it's way down there.
Let me see if I have. To get an idea of where the, what I'm talking about. So Johnstone Mosher now owns that piece that says Cody on it. That's correct, yeah. And, and Logan is what you own?
No, actually, Neil Bryan. I think Logan was her brother or is her brother. He owns that other piece. Um, I own both sides of the road down through there for a ways.
So that map doesn't show that road anymore?
No, it doesn't.
But when I'm just looking at that property line, which is following something, I couldn't know where it's going.
Yeah, that kind of looks like the shape of the road.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, but it's off to the right a little bit. There's a, the top part of it, probably seventy-five yards is where the boundary is on the other side of the road. And you get down towards Hall Ranch Road and it starts getting real close there.
So this doesn't show the road that comes down Otis Road by? Not on this, not on this road. It's in the other one. Right. So someone said that was a VAS trail.
I didn't realize that was that road.
That road was a VAS trail.
Go back to the other VAS, Bill, this really doesn't do anything.
This is a VAS trail.
It is. Okay, I didn't realize it, it didn't bother you.
If it was a VAS trail, do you have to get the permission or something to go on the front? So is there permission granted for those trails?
It would have to be down road. You don't need permission for it down road.
No, I just wondered if I went across somebody's property or something.
Sure does. That road that goes straight down was okay around his winter road. He figured it down to use it in the winter.
The number three road?
The one going straight down to Hall Ranch.
Oh, two, two.
He did that because the hill would get screwed up going down around the well, Ellworth with drifts and so on. So it was easier to go that way. It was shorter for him anyway. And back then, Hall Ranch went through.
Truly, what, thirty-five?
Yeah.
Out on the corner. And that curve that heads toward Hell's, that actually comes off the trail a little bit before it gets to where you can see the houses. It goes down, now it's softwood grove there, but it used to go through that. But it follows that same shape. As far as the piece that goes straight up to the Clutton State Forest Road, that, we did find descriptions, but it didn't go that far. But there's no way in the world that anybody go around there, get down to Hall Ranch and climb that hill and get back up to where they were under guards from. So it was a town road. That's supposedly a part of the stage road. Could get the stage from Rockingham to stage road now that we have.
Well, didn't one of them say it went from Athens to a Rockingham or something?
It does say that, but it's.
Yeah, that's not, yeah, okay. That, that made no sense.
No, you can't make anything fit that way.
Right, okay.
The direction's wrong, everything's wrong. Now, the village, when that road was laid out, like, no, the town was thirty years old. No one knows how many roads were actually laid out.
Oh, I'm sure.
So that was their main way to get through. And the village at that time was up in Middletown, so they had right to it.
This is, uh, this is that, the road that, starting at, that goes off Otis, that's the green, the short section. This is what the description, I have more copies if anybody wants to see it. This is what the description is about. And it's just the yellow that is this segment. And then it goes on to the next page for a whole bunch more. This is, this is in lengths. And that's why it goes, like I said, it goes all the way down, comes back up and ends up on Fisher Hill.
So is there any reason why we should not do this?
I'm worried about that though.
I think, I think the, the other question too, if you decide to do it, where do you want to call it? It's gonna be a trail, that's four.
All right.
No, I'm just saying, John Elwood wanted to be here. Turns out his wife broke her leg yesterday skiing. He was planning to be here, but she had that surgery on her leg or whatever. So he was hoping to attend this meeting and unfortunately can't. So I don't know if there would be, if you could just make this decision tonight or if there's another, you know, time of discussion with this or not or?
We're gonna know what site board took these off. Somebody made a decision not to mess with them anymore.
Well, we were something like, well, the road, something had to be done in like by two thousand fifteen, seventeen.
That was one of them.
That was the ancient roads. This is, these are not ancient roads.
So it was ancient roads that had been done by two thousand fifteen.
And put on the map.
But then the federal judge said, if you found a description, didn't find road, didn't exist.
Well, it did, it did.
Found road, didn't find description, it didn't exist.
It didn't matter what he said because this isn't an ancient road. An ancient road is a field that never had a road in it, but somehow somebody had filed a petition, signed by this select board that, yeah, you can have a road there. But then no one ever did anything.
There's one down in the southwest corner of Grafton.
We don't care because if that's an ancient road, we didn't do anything.
From quarry to Garden Hill Road, never got there.
Bill, do you say there was a gate?
I have, so you're gonna have to ask people sitting here.
The gate is probably, it's probably here. It's after that big sweeping corner.
Who put that in Ellsworth? I think Josh Elwood put that in, thinking that because the road wasn't on the map, that he could do that. He was, he was having some activity up there that were, you know, kind of making a mess of stuff and so on. So as I said, without the road being on the map, he had, we, he thought he had the authority to do that.
We've got cable right up Otis Road too.
There's three gates, I think, you mean. Well, there's one where his, the original town road went up through where his little cabin is. And then there's one at the end of the, like, by Otis Road, and there's a metal one, I think he put on.
A water road. That's the one I'm talking about, the metal gate.
Right. That's where it goes, once you get past his camp and whatnot.
I think it's, I think that was right. All y'all should realize that it was still a town road. How do you do it to be?
But you can have a gate if you don't like it, correct? If the select board says you can have a gate and if long as you don't lock it, you can have a gate and long as you don't lock it. It's called a pen.
But that wasn't laid out as a pen.
I'm saying what the law is. I don't.
Don't you have to change your classification?
You're gonna have to change your classification anyway, because if you want to make these legal trails, which is what my recommendation, I think that's Danny's recommendation, to make them legal trails, because we don't want to screw them. But a legal trail, just sort of in his hand, fifty-foot wide away, the center line of the trail is fifty feet wide. And it goes out fifty feet, twenty-five feet on either side of the center line of the trail. So they look like a road on the map, but they are. And that gives you the right to sometime later come in and reclassify them. They are probably, because no one's ever done anything, they were either class four or class three. So I would suggest you could make a decision how you want them back on the map so we can at least have some, uh, uh, qualifications of what they are.
So if we classify that as a trail somewhere down around twenty years or whatever, somebody could go in, upgrade that road to class three?
Well, the select board could actually upgrade it if they wanted to.
Well, I'm, but I'm just saying, but somebody could.
Yeah, they can bring it up to class three or accept it, just like you did let it go.
Right.
Is that the only thing you need to do to get that taken care of? Get it brought up to trial standards?
No. What we're really doing here tonight is the twentieth of, uh, of February, the select board has to sign a certification of our map lengths, our, our road lengths. So a certified Grafton official map. On that map, I'm taking off legal trail aid that was the old town road. That's about one point three, taking that off. And if I add this on, it would be, uh, something right at a mile. It would be point three eight and point seven three, so, um, a mile and eleven. Mile, one point one one mile.
So can you do it another, I mean, if you can use this twenty-five, that one, you can still do it.
Next year. You can do it next year.
Next year, yeah.
But the, the process takes until, I have to argue with them, get them to agree with me. And that whole process takes until, they have until April to print the map.
So when we have time of, Ellsworth, which one?
Josh.
Is Josh Elwood?
Josh. Did Josh were to come in and we have time to do that or is that something?
We could, well, I don't know. You're, you're gonna certify that this is what it is. And then you, I guess you can say, well, what happened to us like a, a couple of years ago, we added that the cut off, the thing was cut off, Phil's house.
Oh, boy.
And, uh, and they didn't accept it, so they simply took it off our certification. I guess we could go back to them and say, hey, I'm.
Good. And I would understand that this discussion tonight is serving as a hearing for reclassification of these town roads to trails?
Uh, no, Eric. This is to put them back on the map.
Put it back on the map and then you have to decide how you want to put it, either class three, class four, or traffic.
Should we actually have a ninety-eight progress? Putting back, you know, in reclassification of it? I don't know. I don't know if we should or not. My intent was that you put it back on, to put it back on and say that we're putting back on as legal trail. If someone complains about putting back on as legal trails at that, that point in time, that we could then take up the issue of whether or not we have to, to, uh, start with the classification. And the reason for that would be, for instance, if you took my road and made it a legal, or your book, no, not your book, but Rooney's road and made it a legal trail, and they're not, you're not gonna plow it anymore, you're not gonna take that, ever it anymore. And you, you just called a meeting, you put it on other business one night and reclassified it, somebody would probably complain. But if they don't complain, I don't know that we have to do anything.
I'm uncomfortable with the idea that you can, uh, reclassify pending any, some people complaining. I think you'll have to have a formal hearing to do this.
I, I, I think really what we're doing is because there's no documentation that the road was abandoned or thrown up, whatever term you want to use. Because there's nothing to show that the town stopped, it shouldn't show on your map that it is a town road until you can document that it, so we're just really correcting an error in the mapping.
Correct. Uh, that is not, I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with the idea that you're going to say that we're pending having a legal trail, we're telling the folks at the D-Trans that it's a legal trail and then we're not gonna do anything about that classification unless somebody complains. I'm saying, in order to make it a legal trail, you have to have the damn hearing.
Well, if, if you put it on the map because it was supposed to be there, are you creating or just fixing an error in the map?
If you put it on the, on the map as a class four road, no problem. But if you say it's a legal trail, that's changing classification and I think we have to have a hearing to do that.
That's a separate issue.
Yeah, but we don't know what the classification in the world is.
All I can tell you is when I had the legal trails come, um, last year, they're all on there as legal trails. Never was that issue brought up by D-Trans at all.
That, that layout doesn't say anything about trails or any else. It's a town road. And there's been no documentation on it, doing anything with it. If you approve it as going on the map, it should be going on as a class road or a road. And if you want to reclassify it later, then go through the browser.
You know, if you put it on a class four road, we gotta, we gotta maintain it. You guys have, have road, the bridge standards that require you to maintain a class four road.
Good news is there's no racers here.
No, 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 forget about that. Forget about that. That was the old one, right? Am I wrong?
You have to maintain any bridges, coves, and any washes over a foot deep.
You guys approved it last year. You guys approved it last year.
Isn't part of the argument that this is already a, a, a class four road and it just hasn't been on the map?
It's not my argument. My argument is it's a public right, it may be it's not on the map. And I want the public right to put that on the map. And I don't care what you put it on.
So, if it's a class four, do I get a number two fixed to my camper? If it's a class four, do I get a number two fixed to my camper?
If they declared, yeah, if they declared a class four, you've gotta go out there with a pen and a pen and fix it.
Something on it.
No, that's not true.
No, that isn't quite right.
What is? What do we have to do with a class four road? I'm being serious.
We have to maintain the coves, that are town coves. If someone just put one in and there's no permit of it, then it's your cove. That's how we dealt with it on Doug Road, on the class four. Maintain the bridges, which we've done on the other end of the, already. And if there's a gully wash, or I think it's a foot deep, you have to make it so it's passable, not, not eroding, or continual erosion. But if they're bringing it up for us to maintain it, no, that's up to the homeowner. He wants to bring it up to a class three standard, that's on his dollar. And then it's up to the selectmen if they want to approve to take it over.
They're not required.
We don't, the town does not bring it up to a class three because someone's on.
Well, what if, for instance, just to go the other way, what if that was a trail and somebody said, oh, I want the trail to be a class four? So, is it up to them, that landowner, to at least bring it up to a class four?
I would think so.
Which is at least clearing.
But I see Eric's point, that this would have been a class four road, and you're changing the classification if you call it a trail, that you have to have a public hearing.
Right, but we don't know if it was up to the class four road.
Well, but it doesn't say that in the description.
It doesn't say it anywhere in town. There's no reclassification of road from three to four. They just stopped maintaining it, and it became a class four.
But shouldn't Josh be here since Jackson moved three quarters of his land to discuss it?
We can wait until next meeting, still leave it for the twentieth.
As long as he gets back before the twentieth.
Next meeting is the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yeah.
So, why don't we, why don't we just postpone this thing to the, to the next meeting? And have Josh or his representative here, whoever it is, so he can make his argument or whatever.
Is his representative here tonight?
Well, I, I, no, I can come anyway, but, um, no, I get hold of Josh because, you know, I am in touch with him and let him know that that's, that's the plan. And I think it's important for him to be here to know that.
And Kevin, if he can't be here, then he has to appoint somebody to be here and to, to represent him with his argument for, against, or whatever.
Okay, okay. So, you said that's the seventeen?
Yes.
Do you have a sense of what, where Josh is going with this?
I think his feeling is that, you know, as I said, he wouldn't have put any gate in if he didn't feel he was justified doing that. And because of that road not being on the map, I think he, I believe he might mention that he went in and maybe asked a question and looked at the town, at the map at the town hall. And being that it wasn't on that, he went ahead and put the gate in because he was having trouble with some four-wheelers, etc. So, I mean, he's not completely closed. I think he's wondering like, you know, why is this happening now? Or why wasn't it on the map originally?
It should have been.
So, the other issue, the other issue though is, we're putting a road back on the map. I understand that you're not laying out a new road.
That's correct.
Roads mapped back on the map. Okay, does the landowner, and I'm just raising the issue, does the landowner have the right to say no? Probably not, no.
That's the issue.
I would call, I'd call them, talk to Megan or the other one and ask them how that does work. What do you assume to be?
I, I am gonna answer. This is a different situation in town, but, but yet it's a similar situation. Most people know that GIA property, and most people know we've had some issues with access. The, the long-term solution GIA is looking at is to improve the, the piece of property so that they can go out Walker Road into Athens. But the same issue's going to occur there once they do repairs of that road so that they can use it. If you can't block the use of it during mud season, people are gonna be up there ripping and tearing. And you can put $12,000 worth of work in there and have it torn up in an afternoon, and then the vehicle's parked down at MKT covered with mud. Aren't I cool? And they just destroyed the road. So, how do you, how do you protect that if you can't gate it? That's kind of where I'm going with that.
There's, there's a way that you can, because if you read that, that segment or section on the class four, the selectmen have the right to say when and when not. They can run a class four road.
It's like posting a road, you look in the frame, you should.
So, it can be protected.
Yes, there is a part in there, it's been many years since I read that part, but the selectmen have the right to restrict class four road when it can be used. I would assume being that wording that you can say it can't be used from such a date to another day.
But maybe, maybe Josh, Josh will go through, maybe that would not be a concern if it could be shut down during certain times of the year.
Well, that's probably what I'm thinking.
I know it's a different thing. I know over in Hampshire, there's a couple of trails.
There's no soil to make law down there.
That was a, one was.
Not on water.
Right.
But I'm thinking of repairing the road between the Yellow House and the Fairbanks, that's the part.
Well, look, is it okay if we postpone this to the seventeenth?
Yes.
Okay, I'm giving you a motion, I think we can just put it on the agenda for the seventeenth. So, then Kevin, you, you, you can touch base with Josh.
I will.
And tell him that he has to, if he can't be there, he has to have a representative. Otherwise, you know, the select board will do whatever they want.
Yeah, we'll pass it on.
Okay. All right, okay, so now that we've got that written down. Commissions. You all have the commissions for the school and for the wastewater? I'm assuming that the school has, the wastewater has, they're filled in their names and the, and the years. But there's no, there's nothing filled in for the school bill, so what, what are we supposed to do with this?
The, the creation of a commission for the Rapid Water, Wastewater is a conversion from the committee to a commission.
Correct.
With the, with appointment of those years. I'll let, I'll let Suzanne talk. She's the chair, let her talk about what she's done. I, I wrote the basic part and then the committee itself, and Suzanne rewrote it and, and she talked to them and filled in the dates of the length of terms. So, what, at the end of the night, if you approve it, you should approve the wastewater commission with the, those general, I mean, with, with the general purposes. And then the appointments, they need to have the rules precede, precede your conflict event, which we can do later. And then have the specific purposes for this commission, which is at the very bottom and on to the next page. So, if you're going to adopt it, I would adopt it with all those or, or at least if you're not, if you're not gonna adopt a purpose, a specific purpose to the wastewater and water or a general purpose for any commission, then I would amend it before you do that and then make the appointments of these. And I would ask that you make the appointments through twenty, uh...
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-one, so after town meeting next, next year. Just so that we have some continuity. Suzanne, you wanna speak up for her for this?
I think there are two key takeaways for the select board. One is that the reason we're asking to be named a commission rather than a committee is because our work will transcend at least one, if not two, town meetings. And while the select board has every right to dissolve a commission, it, it's, it is more likely that with the stature of a commission, the select board would choose to allow the commission work to continue. So, the main takeaway here and the main reason we're asking for this change is to provide at least some opportunity or a higher probability of that continuity. And the second key takeaway, as you read there, is just to emphasize what we've said to the select board and the select board agreed is part of our purpose, is that we see ourselves in the role of providing information and education to our community about water management. And therefore, we are likely not to take a stand on anything. We are likely to continue to provide information in educational forums or whatever forum they may take over the next months so that people in the town can make up our own mind, your own minds, about the kind of wastewater management system they'd like to have. And then I believe Bill has presented the terms in the document that you had. So, those are staggered terms, again, in line with our consistency goal. And the other item that Bill also mentioned, I'll repeat, is that if you would agree to allow our committee to stay intact through the town meeting of twenty-one, then the staggered terms begin. Did that make sense? Does that answer your thought and question?
Would you consider suggestion?
Yes.
I see the terms of the vice chair and the chair expire at the same time. I'd make a recommendation that you stagger those so, like, perhaps Matt Siano is two twenty-three. Well, maybe, maybe he went twenty-two and then neither the vice chair and the chair went twenty-four.
Something like that.
That's American suggestion. Yeah, so I think that, if that happens, Bill, we change Paul, right?
Yeah, that would change Paul.
That happened originally, Paul, so do you have that? Can I take, can I take a look?
Suzanne, do you want mine?
No, that's an excellent suggestion.
So, the suggestion is to put Matt Siano who's two twenty-two and Chris Wallace is two twenty-three.
Yeah, so definitely we want to leave Chris on the longest. So, Alex change places with Matt.
I'll change with anybody, Suzanne.
Ken volunteers. Ken volunteers to say.
I'll switch with anybody.
How did you arrive to Kathy's state?
So, I sent out, I sent out an email to all the members of the committee. And you may not like this process, Kathy, and you may say, no. I sent out an email to all the members of the committee and I asked them to volunteer for terms. And I thought there would be a rush for everybody to sign up for a three-year term. So, so I said, if that happens or if I don't hear back, then I will pull names from a hat. And then later on, so I had originally taken the one-year slot. And that, that's how it happened that, and then I later on heard from Paul and Paul said that he wanted to have the one-year slot. So, in respect of that, I called Bill today, because it was kind of a last-minute request, and put him in and took his place. And that's how we ended up with this situation that I agree with Al, it's not ideal for both of us to have.
I just throw that out as one possibility, but I think their take home is that the chair and vice chair don't exist.
No, I think you're absolutely right about that. So, Kim, would you really seriously?
I don't think you, I don't think you.
So, Kathy, are you all right with my process?
It's a good process.
I don't have, I don't have to agree, but I can accept it.
Okay.
And did the committee, the folks that are on the committee, did they go through this whole document?
Yes, yes, we would.
And you got it, yeah.
That was on the agenda for our three-year term. Okay, so then, Bill, I think what we're agreeing to do is to exchange Suzanne for Matt onto twenty twenty-three, and Matt will come down to twenty twenty. No, 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 that's wrong.
Of course.
Chris will go up to Matt on twenty twenty-three. And Matt will come down to twenty twenty-two.
There's, there's of course nothing to say at the end of a person's term that they just don't get another three-year term if they are willing.
Yes, that's true. And it's also true, Al, that the committee or commission members, a commission member in this phase can resign at any time too. So, it's, so they're, they're, yeah. Okay, so is that clear? So, Paul is twenty twenty-one, and Ken and Chris are twenty twenty-three. And Matt and Suzanne are twenty twenty-two. Is that good for everybody?
Work for me. Make a motion that we accept the recommendation with the corrections made.
And, and it doesn't go into effect to twenty twenty-one, is that correct?
It'll go in effect, it'll go in effect in, in this town meeting, fiscal year twenty. But our committee, commission will stay completely as it is, with no turnover until the fiscal year twenty-one town meeting.
No, I don't, I don't understand what you're doing. You've got to create a commission. Are you creating a commission to begin March fifth? With these appointments? That's what you're doing?
That's it.
March third? Or why aren't you creating a commission that starts right now?
Yeah, yeah, right now. Obviously, we gotta start right now. It's, it's not working.
Just so, Bill, remember you and I talked about, and you mentioned earlier, just so we stay together until this fiscal year twenty-one.
Well, you, you created it now.
There's no turnover.
The first term is, Paul's term is, it's March.
The town meeting.
That town meeting is the twenty-one, but I created it now.
But if you create, it, because it, the select board creates it, it's not a, it doesn't get on the, it's not voted by the voters. So, we can do it right now and be done with it.
Yeah, that's it.
Just so we know that the anniversary date for these appointments is not February third, twenty twenty-one. The anniversary date for these appointments is town meeting fiscal year twenty-one. So that if we have something to present to the town at that time, the commission will be intact as it is now, okay?
Now, these will also be select board appointments, right? The select board will make appointments. You can present, and then the select board is approved.
Sure.
Yeah. It should be, because it's a commission of the select.
I didn't catch that.
The select board will appoint, when a person is due, the committee can make a recommendation.
Should it be on, should it be on your appointments, like the eighteenth or so, March each year?
Right, yes. Okay.
Okay.
So, do we have, do we have a second to act on?
Yeah, I second.
Any further discussions? So, all in favor of our motion to create this commission now and the anniversary date would be the twenty-first, right? Is that correct?
Yes, now meeting, uh...
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-four.
Say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Abstain.
Your thing? React it. So, it's four, four of my attention. Now, Bill, the school, what do we want to do with the school? There's no names here.
I want you to appoint a commission. Wait, what, first of all, does Hardy, does Hardy have any comment on this?
I think, I sort of talked with Jack Brier that I would be interested in possibly participating.
Right, I did that.
But I think Jack needs to get involved here and define with you people, what do you want the commission? what do you want the commission to do as a select board? What do you want us to provide you with for information?
Well, he should come to us with a...
That's correct. I agree.
He should come to us with his ideas so that we can discuss it and then decide whether we like it or don't like it.
So what I'm saying is I don't think you can do anything.
No, I don't think we can either.
That's why I'm saying it's all of this more information.
So that everybody understands, maybe you do, I just want to make sure. Jack is concerned that if, in the event that we are successful with the lawsuit, that there could be a vacuum and this committee could then kind of maybe fall into it. Or if we're not successful, then somehow they could be an advisor to live on between the town and the new, whatever. As I understand, that was what he thought of us. So, but I think he has to come and give us.
More definition.
Yeah. Bill?
That's all well and good. If the town wants to have a commission that gives it under the education code, some representation before the school board, whether or not Jack comes back with something because he's, I've been asking him for something for two months so far. And I know he's busy, but I don't get anything from him. I sent this to him, just like it is. I then went back and rewrote the purpose because I didn't hear anything from him. If the town, and I'm not advocating for a commission, but apparently his attorney, Larry Slayson, has told him that if the town has a commission, they have some standing before the school board, before any school district. And they have to be recognized by the district. By that, I mean not, whatever, they have standing to talk in front of the school district for the whole town. So what I, I think you, the town has to decide, and I don't know who that is, whether or not you want this, whether or not Jack comes back or not.
Well, I think it's hard to make that decision until we understand what Jack wants. I mean.
What does the town, no, I'm saying, what is the town that wants?
I take the opposite approach to what you're saying, and I agree with Bill. Is we as a select board can establish what we want. If Jack wants to come and negotiate or say, well, consider this. But we can be proactive and say, this is what we think is good for our constituents to represent them. Until somebody asks us to change it, that'll be what they have.
So then if that's the case, then what we should do is put this on the agenda for the seventeenth. And between now and then, work out what you want the commission to do. And then we can make that decision. Bill?
Make a what we want it to do.
Well, what do you want, what do you want the commission to be?
It's all right here.
And do we need it?
I think we can do what's here and then just leave it up to the current school board to, Jack, to come up with, or people volunteer to fill in the names.
Here, Bill. I agree to put it off till the seventeenth. Meanwhile, find out what that education section is and what it says. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay? So we'll put this on the seventeenth. Bill will do some more research. In the meantime, maybe, you know, individually, if you want to talk to Bill and you have some ideas, let him know. And then he can, he can have a new document for us through the seventeenth.
If we could get Jack here.
I'll tell Jack.
We should also extend the invitation to the folks that are currently on the school board. Or at least make them aware of this. I don't know how much of this Jack is shared.
Jack and Jessica.
Well, I'll make sure there's two school board members. Jack and Jessica. Those are the two school board members.
Okay, so the others have to talk.
Because there is a budget meeting this Thursday at the school. I'm planning to attend and I'll try to talk to Jack.
Okay. Do we move on from that? Alternatively, we need to request county approval with WRC as a letter.
I can address it.
Can you, Bill?
When you have it, when you have a town plan, if you want to get the benefits of the town plan, like be able to get municipal planning plan, it has to be, it has to be approved by the wind and commission. And your planning process has to be approved. That's one hearing. That letter is already gone to them. The second hearing, hopefully that same night, would be, and they would probably happen on a select board meeting night, but at five and five-thirty. The second meeting would be for the energy class that we comply with all the energy requirements so that our town plan can have preferred status before the PUC on any energy project. So I've already sent that letter and requested that it carries from them because the code says that, it doesn't say you guys have to ask, so I asked. And the, there is a huge form that is very scary. But it is a shortcut in it and Marion in major is going to help me through it. But there's pages you can skip by just saying yes, that it is kind of like the wind and plant. And then another yes, if it's kind of like something else. And then you go to the energy thing. And so it might be a lot easier. Otherwise, you got to specify where everything is. And though the form I did in September pretty much goes through every paragraph of the thing that says where you'll find it, I apparently don't have to do that. So that's what I'm hoping to be able to finish that. But you can't have the hearing until that's done. And I didn't read her email, but Joe, you said you did.
She requested to have a meeting sometime in February or in March. I forget the date in March, but we're about to go for it. And I asked Bill about that.
If I can finish the form by time, we could have it.
I suggest.
No, we don't want to have it. Let's do it in March.
I suggest we put it into March because we've got all this kind of stuff coming up.
Way too much.
But I don't know whether, you know, I don't know whether we can make a deadline or not. But we can put it on a March meeting if it's okay with everybody.
I, no, I probably got the email. I just was busy.
No, it was an email.
No, I probably got the email, but I didn't.
They were requesting two dates, a date in February, a date in March. And I said, Bill, I said, let's do it in March if you can. That's my comment, but it's up to the board.
So that's what this is for.
So is that okay with everybody, that Bill continue to form and we'll set up a date so we're ready sometime in March?
You guys don't have to do anything except if you want.
Show up. Yep.
And you're going to have the meeting afterwards. It's their meeting to go over it in front of the town and ask questions of the planning commission or the people in the town or you guys.
WRC.
WRC. It's a, it's a, it's, well, I don't know how they do it anymore. Eric probably knows. It's a three-person committee?
At least. And one staff person usually comes from the WRC and they hold it preferably in the town that is requesting the approval. Sometimes they'll hold it in their own offices down there.
They said they would put here.
Yeah, the MOLI said they would come to our, they'd do it on any of our select board.
Yeah, that's what they did before.
They also said it's about fifteen or twenty people, so.
Have it at school?
No. We don't have to have it. We can have it at the school, but this is not a fight over the town plan.
No, I know.
This is for them to come say. That's all. That's all it's for. We can have it at the school if you want, but you're going to be sitting there with three chairs.
Yeah, I know.
You can do it.
It's an opportunity for three of your peer planning commission members from similar towns, but not adjacent towns, to look at your town plan, give it a critique and hold those recommendations out to you at a town hearing, preferably in your town. There's nothing binding about their critique. It's just informational and they take information back from the town at the same time.
But if they make a recommendation.
Then they have, they as a committee have to make a recommendation.
And then what happens?
To your commission to accept the draft and town plan that's written and the town's planning process as was done. And we've got the special wrinkle for the energy plan on top of that.
But what happens if their recommendations, they want to see something correct, you know? How do you correct it?
Very rarely. I've seen that happen once.
Okay.
Their recommendations are not binding on us. They're informational and are for the purpose of informing further changes to the town plan to its next edition.
All right, so why don't we wait and see what happens? And we'll figure what date they can, but we'll put it on the agenda sometime in March or maybe even April, depending on what happens. The next item, there's a, I have a suggestion. And I know in the past, what we have done is we've taken the select board and we've given each one a task. Somebody does the warrant, somebody does the select budget, somebody does something else. Because there's a contested elections this year, there's some rumors out there that our budget went up twelve percent and there's going to be some discussion and questions of us about our budget. I felt maybe it would be worth us having an open meeting where we could all get together with Kim and we could go over the budget line by line so that we're all up to speed, rather than sitting up there, a candidate at the pre-town meeting and looking, we don't have the answer or there, it's a false answer. So if you want to do that, you can find with me. Let's pick a date, when Kim's available.
We can just do it sometime during the day.
Yeah, during the day. I'm looking at, and then, you know, we can, everybody will be on the same page so that, and then we can decide how we want to handle the, you know, the pre-town meeting. So I don't know if you want.
It'd be a warrant?
It'd be a warrant, be the.
It'd be a warrant, either, anybody can come, but.
You know, we can do it up in town, hold it, do it during the warrant.
What usually works the best is to go through and identify all the changes.
Exactly.
Where you've increased it.
Yep.
And go right there. And you don't, you go there and say, this is an increase and this is why.
Yeah, this is an invasion.
But you're proactive. You're not trying to hide anything. You're looking at and say, there's a change here, increase. This is the reason it would be increased. And usually, once they hear the explanation, they say, yeah, that makes sense.
And we as a board, we all approve the budget.
Right.
So, you know, we have an opportunity to explain to the residents why we did what we did. So how do you want, you want to give some dates to Bill?
About, we said, we're all here right now. So it has to be a day other than a Wednesday, right?
How about the eighteenth of February? Tuesday.
Well, that's tax day. It's normally a Saturday the fifteenth, but I've extended.
How about the eleventh?
That's better for me.
What is that exactly?
I can't do the eleventh.
Eleven would be like a week from tomorrow.
I can't do the eleventh. I have a meeting in August.
How about the tenth?
And about the thirteenth.
Thirteenth is a Wednesday.
Thirteenth is a Thursday.
Thirteenth is a Thursday.
Thirteenth is Thursday. I can't do the thirteenth. I have a meeting. How about the tenth? I can do the tenth. I can.
Monday, the tenth?
Tuesday?
Monday.
Monday.
Monday's Monday.
The baby. That's what we are today. Yeah. And what time, what time of day do you want to do this?
Do it at nine. Nine?
Fine with me. Girl in the bed, but I worked. Yeah, yeah, town hall. So February tenth, ten, nine AM, right?
Yep.
Okay. And if there's a conflict, do we let it know that you always try another day?
Just thinking, how many emails would you say?
Exactly.
Oh, no, we still leave emails.
No, no, no.
So what do you want to get prepared? What are you looking for, like your last two years?
Why?
No. Because all I'm going to do is print out reports.
Well, I think what, I think what Kim, what we can do is go over the current budget and then kind of look back and say, what is the, because questions are going to come up, I think, about, oh, the budget was up twenty percent or ten percent or whatever. So we can go back a couple of years and see, last year was a two percent increase. This year is a two and a half, whatever.
Okay, so you want to see nineteen and.
Yeah, two years.
Yeah, two years.
So nineteen that was budgeted, then the actual and then the twenty that were.
Right, yes.
The twenty that were in and twenty-one that were.
Right, and if it went up six percent, whatever the percentage is, we can tell them why it went up.
And it'd be helpful to have the actual, not just the total, but the line items that would show where the increases are.
It's like the budget table idea, except this time it's going to have one more in there.
We don't need a worksheet or anything. We just need the.
With what you're saying, the budget, when you worked on the budget, you had three columns in a blank. And you filled it in the blank.
Right.
This will have all the columns filled in. The blank will be filled in.
Yes.
Is that enough?
Will the town report be backed by that?
I know. Not by the tenth. I'm hoping, I haven't heard from them.
That brings up another point. Does it make sense that we wait until we have the town reports in our hand to do this meeting, make our notes in our town report?
It should be the same.
Well, the town, the budget, the savings was in the town.
Well, I know, I'm just thinking.
No.
I was just going to say.
If I have a grant, but I'm not there, so forms weren't, I'm not there. And I'm giving you the tenth.
Did you look up for that?
Yeah, the tenth, okay. All right, next item is about the justice of the peace.
Yes, Tom. You want to, go ahead.
Yeah, well, we had a resignation with Ed Bank, even town. Typically, when there's a JP vacancy anywhere in the state that is filled by gubernatorial appointment, you will, they typically will appoint someone of the same party as the vacancy and was put by the town Democratic Committee. So the Democrat Committee provided a name. The state does require before we forward a recommendation that there be a letter of interest on the part of that candidate who's going to be nominated to fill that vacancy. So David Woodall has come forward, volunteered to do so. He's a member of the town Democratic Committee and is with a letter intending to fill the remainder of the vacancy of Ed Bank's term until the November election. And so that can be sent from up here.
So we don't need to do anything, right? Do you need a motion on us?
Just be aware.
Do you need a motion or something?
I'm willing just to have your blessings in a minute, but yes, you're okay with it. And his email does say, I'm willing to complete the term of JP Ed Bank, thanks to David Woodall. And I will accompany the letter that I have to Suzanne, who is Secretary of Secretary.
I'll make a motion to the extent of, in favor of all.
Second? Chris, second, Al, second?
Chris.
For the discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Okay, is that satisfied, Kim?
That's great.
And then the next item is Kim's eight A, which is mapping?
Is, now.
Well, money for.
I was talking about the wastewater. As a committee, again, we have got together and we're trying to go back over and clean up files from the feasibility studies that were done by Al Crete in Taiwan. We pulled out their maps and we're sorting through, but we want to be able to use some of these maps to update the data that's on them. And in order to do that, we don't want to ruin the original, so we'd like to make copies of probably four maps that's already there. And by doing that, they're very large, so we would want to take them like staples. But I'm also asking for permission to be able to reverse whomever is going to take these maps so it's not coming out of their pocket. We do have a line item in our budget that we've had for many, many years since I came here that says sewage study. And it was used back when the feasibility study was done. And right now, we don't. And it was used back when the feasibility study was done. And right now, we don't budget in, we don't have a line item budgeted for it. But we did spend a hundred and thirty-four dollars when we sent out all of the information for our water testing. So we got stamps and supplies. So if that's in there, of course, it'd be a negative, but, you know, we can, it's a blessing to move. Spending money to at least have a, a map copy.
So it's something that Ego could do?
I don't know if he'd take copies or not, but it was that or staples.
Because you can just do professional services.
Paper copies, you're just gonna get printed or are they digital?
They're paper copies, twenty-four by thirty-six, large format.
Devo certainly has the equipment to do that.
Yeah.
Make them leave it new for free.
Sort of staples and just about fifteen dollars or something that size.
Each, each sheet?
Yeah.
But maybe we should.
You only pack in sixty bucks. You said four maps.
Yeah.
Tops would be four maps.
But maybe Devo will do it cheaper or something, maybe. It's worth a shot.
If not, I say he'll do it.
Yeah, we can check into the pricing for both of the turnaround, too. That's another thing, so both of them are gone right now.
So are you looking for motion?
Yes, so that.
Make the motion, authorize Kim to, you could get the maps, photo copies, etc.
I'll say.
Question, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote. Okay. Okay, but that's, you're all sat and nothing anymore? Public comment, do we have any public comment? Okay. Bill, the tally, the town attorney discussion. You've got some letters and stuff, so I don't know what you're on with it.
Well, I could, if you just had a short executive session, you want to explain where, where we are right now. I didn't get the last letter. I got two letters and I was, I was hoping that I have the letter from the.
Should we wait, do the next meeting while we have all three, rather than do it again?
Oh, maybe, but maybe.
I mean, there's no great rush here. I mean.
Well, well, yeah, as long as Al, as long as Robin keeps answering my.
Well, what would you like to do? You wanna go into sex and do it too?
I can just tell you where it stands. It takes, it takes three minutes.
Okay.
Have a long discussion.
Let's do executive session, get our data on what we got.
Okay. All right, so before we do that, do we have any other business? Yes, Alan, you always do.
I earned my thousand dollars.
Did you put your question yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
The other day when we were, John and Danny and I met with, and Bill, met with the engineers, we were at the Howland Mill Bridge. And we got talking about the trucks coming out onto the road and looking along the ends of the road. We've got some bushes, tree shrubs, stuff along in there that are in the, that have grown out into the road right away. Do we have a policy or, or do we just send the crew down with the whacker and cut it? You know, how, how do we deal with?
I would send a letter to the landowner.
Well, that's kinda where, kinda where I'm going with it.
I would just send a letter, think what you're gonna do and I'll go do what we've done before, but.
But it's within the right of it, right?
I don't care.
Yeah. Yeah, but kind of courtesy, I would say, and then if they don't come in, if they have, if they have an objection, they can come in and be on the agenda or whatever and, and we can deal with that.
But it needs to be dealt with and not just for the logging. It's, when, when the town trucks are going up through there, those bushes are whacking on the town truck mirrors. And that happens to every truck that goes through there. Sooner or later, somebody's gonna react to it and they're gonna squirt through the other lane and it's gonna be an accident.
I think we should send a letter out to this individual.
That's my first one.
Okay.
My second one, I told you Danny and I were gonna go to the municipal, municipality meeting on Emerald Ash Bor. Nobody else went, so we're gonna share with you what we learned there. Based on the devastation that has occurred in the Midwest where Emerald Ash died. And Emerald Ash Bor kills all three ash that we have in Vermont, green ash, black ash, and white ash. We should expect ninety-nine percent of our ash trees in town to die, based on what's happened in our Midwest. That's not a scare tactic. It's just, this is what happened. That's what I saw coming across Ohio, Pennsylvania, and New York. So it's reality. The thing that is interesting is they're finding when the trees die from this Emerald Ash Bor, that they get really brittle and they're not safe to cut with a, for a person with a helmet and a chainsaw required. So it, it increases the cost of cutting about three times. The other towns have, that have done surveys are finding in their town, only counting the trees that are in right of way, not counting the ones that are under power lines, because Green Mountain Power will be responsible for those. But counting trees six inches in diameter and larger, that would be our responsibility, the select boards. They're finding somewhere around fifteen hundred up to thirty-seven hundred trees that will require cutting. I think we ought to have some kind of a plan of how we're gonna deal with it. If nothing else, that we set some money aside in an account. I plan to go to the training session.
Eight.
The eight, in Rockingham. Department of Forests and Parks is putting on the training and they'll show how to, they have a program, they show how to do the inventory. And Suzanne and I have talked a little bit. We have some interest in the folks at the museum for some training to see if we can get some volunteers to help do, do inventory. If nothing else, we ought to have some identification of priority. You know, a dead ash tree on Hall Ranch, that could be an inconvenience when the power comes out. But that's an entirely different situation where you have two families or three, depending where you are on the road. That's an entirely different situation than dead ash trees in, in the village. And so we ought to set some priorities for, you know, the village, one-twenty-one, thirty-five, the valley, that sort of thing. And, and we should invest some time in this.
Where, where does the tree warden?
Tree warden, the tree warden in general or the tree warden in Grafton?
Well, in, in.
The tree warden.
In general.
The tree warden has the authority to, to do, make the judgments of this tree goes, that tree stays, that sort of thing. Settle disputes or a land order. There is a law that is proposed right now to increase the jurisdiction or, or authority that a tree warden has. And if you read the VLCT, they, they were a little, I don't know what I wanna say, but I don't think VLCT showed appreciation to, to what, it was actually a law request that came from Forests and Parks. And Forests and Parks asked for more jurisdiction for the, for the tree warden, because they realized this is gonna become a problem. And, and it's up to the individual towns to decide how they're gonna respond.
Well, I read that VLCT and.
They were a little critical.
Their issue was that it was, it was taking away the power of the selectmen and, and so that where the, the selectmen are in charge of the, of the roads and the right of ways, the tree warden could usurp the selectmen to do what he wants to do without any authority. And that's where they were unhappy.
I, we appoint, the select board appoints the tree warden. So if you got a problem, you appoint a different tree.
No, it, it was the, the legislation, you appoint him and he can do what he wants and you can't control it. That was, that was their argument.
Well, anyways, we need to, we, we need to invest some time and energy into this.
Well, here's, here's my point. You can't put any money in because the budget's already done. So the question is, if this is gonna be this, if this problem is going to be this big, it's gonna affect every town in Vermont, not just Grafton, not just Southern Vermont. The state is gonna have to help us somehow. I mean, there's gotta be some kind of money.
But, but you think, you think the town doesn't have any money, therefore the state should help.
I didn't say that.
But the state doesn't have any money either, just because this problem happened, so.
But the state has this, but I'm just saying to you is that, let's not rush into this thing. The, the ash bors are here and they're coming, but they're not here in, in the intensity that they are. So maybe this is something we have to deal with next year, you know, in when, when, when the select board sits down and does the budget. And maybe we need to get some of our legislatures so like some legislation can be introduced. And maybe there's some help from somebody. I mean, obviously, it's, it's gonna be a statewide problem. It's not just a town problem.
It's in London there.
They did add that the federal government had already said if there is anything to do related to this ash Emerald War, they will not fund it, etc. That meet, the class over there that they will not provide any money for grants or anything already. If anything to do with it, because it's gonna be so widespread that they're not helping.
And Al, you met, was you that mentioned that towns have gone bankrupt dealing with this issue?
I didn't, I didn't mention it, but.
I saw that somewhere.
Green saw that someplace.
I think it was online.
Okay.
Chris Camp, he talked about it.
Right, yeah.
It's a lot cheaper to cut them down while they're structurally sound.
But I mean, you've noticed that they got this disease. It's already three to five years into it, so it's already too late.
Yeah.
It doesn't just show up instant. The, the law has been there three to five years once they, you actually see signs that it's dying.
Well, Alan, so I understand and I think we need to plan for it. How do you wanna handle this?
What I think we need is to dedicate some time and get involved with it.
Okay, but I mean, we need to do inventory, so we know what we're dealing with. I mean, I think what, what, maybe what you could do is put you and, I mean, get somebody, whoever you wanna work with, the museum or whatever, and, and get some kind of a plan that we can, that we can start doing something with. I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I, I know what an ash tree is, but I don't have any idea of how to go out and count them and whatever and.
You'd guard a chain session.
Oh, yeah.
That's what, that's what Saturday's session.
Oh, hey, whoa, whoa, come on, let's. Hold on, hold on. Party, party, Alan, yeah.
Sorry. So on Saturday's training session, they're going to share with the people that are there, the program's already written. There's a couple of different ways that you can collect the data. But the county Gilford applied for a grant from Forests and Parks and they purchased two tablets and then they, they split their volunteers up into groups and they worked as little teams to collect the data. They, they had thirty-seven hundred trees so far, six inches and over, and they're halfway through their survey. They have a little bit more roses in maybe the.
Well, maybe what, after you've attended all these, these, you know, conferences and know what we can do, then maybe we should have a committee or do put it on the agenda for in March and figure out what we need to do with the town. I mean, it's not gonna go blank.
Devastating. I mean, it's just like the elm and the chestnut all over again. It's, it's something that I think we need to be proactive about as much as we can and be, educate people. I mean, the woods are really, really important to us as a community.
Well, the, the woods are one thing and that's up to the individual landlord. That's not what I'm talking about.
The village are.
Well, yeah, but I'm just talking about road right of ways right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Which were running for fire.
The, the Pinnacle View Association is gonna meet with GIA to get permission. Pinnacle, they're, they're proactive and they wanna do some hazard tree removal along the trail system, their hiking trail system.
Well, we have the same situation. I don't know how many ash trees we have in Village Park. But as if, if we continue to renovate the, and put hiking trails in there, dead ash trees there, we need to be proactive as well, so we don't have any accidents.
Well, they also have Grafton pines, too.
Well, they have, that's the, that's, that title, so they have their own. And I don't know whether we have ash trees in the cemetery. That's another issue.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm saying, if you have an inventory, you find out what you have and where they are and you can assign a priority and it's gonna be a higher priority where people are, whether it's in the village, whether it's in the park, whether it's in the cemetery, that's gonna be different than out my book.
So you, can you say again, Al, on the February eighth train, where it is and what time?
It's at, it's at Rockingham Library and it's from ten fifteen till twelve-thirty.
On a Saturday, isn't it?
That's correct.
And that's conducted by who again?
Department of Forests and Parks. They're urban community foresters.
Any other business?
I think I got it all done.
All right, so the, the next, before we go to executive session, the next scheduled meeting is on February seventeenth at six o'clock here. And now do you need a motion to go into executive session? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for coming.